Meeting into session. And this meeting is being recorded.
Recording in progress.
Councilwoman Jones, could you do the invocation, please?
Certainly. If we could look to the Lord, our Father and God, we bless you, we praise you, we honor you for the breath in our life, the breath in our body, the things that you've provided for us, the way you looked over us today and watched over us and given us your love and kindness. We thank you, Father, so much for your grace and mercy on this day. We thank you, Father, for the city of Glen Arden, for its leadership, for its citizens. We ask you, Father, to continue to make provision for each and every citizen, whatever it is they stand in need of. If it is your will, Father, let it be done. As we all come together to say, "Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come; thy will be done, in earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, and forgive us of all of our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us, and lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil. Father, for it is you that we come, in the mighty name of your Son, Jesus the Christ," and we all say, "Amen."
Amen. Amen. Thank you, Councilwoman Jones. Madam Clerk, could you do the roll call, please?
Sure. Councilwoman Fareed?
Here.
I don't see Councilwoman Guillaume, I don't see her on yet. Councilman Hairston?
Yes.
Councilman Herring?
Here.
I'm sorry, Councilwoman Jones?
Here.
Council Vice President Ferguson?
Here.
And President Curtis is not here, he's traveling. You do have a quorum.
Thank you. Moving on to the agenda. Is there a motion to adopt the agenda?
So moved.
Was there a second?
Second.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Hearing none. Madam Clerk, could you do the call?
Sure. Councilwoman Fareed?
Yes.
Councilman Hairston?
Yes.
Councilman Herring?
Yes.
Councilwoman Jones?
Yes.
And Vice President Ferguson?
Yes. Thank you. Okay. There's item on the agenda, we have the minutes, you all have them in your packets, and we can review them and vote on them at the regular meeting. Legislation. The first legislation, resolution to approve the appointment of Beverly K. Habiter as the city manager for the city of Glen Arden. Any discussion? Concerns? Okay, thank you. Second resolution, legislation is the resolution to establish and preserve a community garden program in the city of Glen Arden. Is there a discussion or presentation?
Yes. Council Vice President, did you want to wait until the topics of discussion to do that? Or how did, because I noticed that it's on, it's on the topics of discussion.
Okay, we can do that, yeah. That was, okay. Okay, finally, resolution to renew leasing agreement with Pitney Bolt and upgrade the posters machine. Any discussion? Hearing none. Next on the agenda, reports, everyone has the reports. Unless you have any questions or concerns, we will discuss this in detail at the regular meeting. Anyone have any concerns or questions? Okay, all righty then. Moving on, topic of discussion, I'm gonna, I have wanted to talk about the Ethics Commission and the Election Board, I'll be very brief. Both of those, the committee and commission, they are lacking. I think with the Election Board, most of, most of them have resigned. And that should be, consist of ten members and a four-year appointment. And as it pertains to Article, I mean, Section 701, Board of Elections, in A, it says that the mayor shall approve, I mean, shall appoint, and the council shall approve the appointments. And in B, the same section, it talks about the four-year appointment and ten members. And in C, it talks about when there's an existing vacancy, the city council shall appoint a minimum of two representatives to reside in each ward. So again, we might, what we want to look into that, if anyone have any nominees, or we need to get that board replenished, because we do not. It's a four-year appointment, and I think it's pretty much gone. I think everyone pretty much resigned. And as far as the Ethics Commission, that's the same, pretty much the same appointment by the mayor with approval of the council, and that's five members. And as far as I know, that has been there's no one acting in that, at least I know we do not have five, we have to have five to function. And that's also, that's a two-year term, however, it can continue, the people can continue to serve beyond their expiration, you know, upon removal, except for upon removal, or if they are successors appointed. So we need to, either as a council, if you have any citizens that you might want to ping about, to see if they're interested in any one of those, I would suggest that we do that. And not only that, the Ethics Board, we are mandated to have, have an Ethics Commission in functioning. And that's, that's all I have for that. Anyone has any comments or questions? Okay. Moving on, we have the current council rules, Councilman Herring? You have the floor?
Yes, I wanted these on, want this on the agenda, because actually, I think we need to follow the council rules. I have a major problem with the parliamentarian. At the last meeting, man, it was asked of her to re- haven't read them. So technically, she should not be doing any parliamentary procedures, because that we follow council rules and only follow parliamentary rules when when there's a conflict, and the council rules do not address those issues. So I'm just saying that we need to move forward and follow what rules we put in place, what's been voted on by this council. And I also have an issue with the, her, the parliamentary given guidance on something that clearly states that the citizens get five minutes. It says citizens will be, will be, can come to the podium one time for a maximum of five minutes. And I think that's what they should be getting. Again, I mean, I will have to, if she is not up to date on our rules, I don't feel she should be be the parliamentarian for our meetings until she knows. It says, Item 3B, meetings of the council, the council meetings are used to consider legislation or matters of concern from the council members, administration, or citizenry. Meetings may be called by the request of the mayor, council, majority of the council, and it has the rules of the meetings. And then it states all the rules of the meetings that, that apply to the council. And I just feel that these rules are not being adhered to. I feel that these rules are not being taken seriously, the charter mandates that we have council rules. And those rules should stay in place. And I think that we need to start looking at this much more closely and following what our rules are, based on how they are written. And if any changes to these rules as, in the way of shorter minutes, or three minutes, or whatever, that should be a decision made by the council, because the council, once again, put the rules in place, not one person. And then it says, under item number four, rules of debate, the rules of parliamentary, parliamentary practice and procedure as set forth in the latest edition of Robert Roush, a governor council, the city council in all cases to which they are applicable, and not in conflict with the rules, with these city council rules procedures. And basically, again, it says that the council, a council member should be able to speak uninterrupted. No, we don't have time limits on our, on our, on our discussions. Once, it says, once recognized, a council member wants to recognize and not be interrupted. That's as far a point of order, that's to be reconciled immediately by the president. After the president's decision, the speaker may proceed or cease. So I'm just saying that these rules, we don't, I mean, why are we voting rules in place if we're not following? And we're going to pick them willy-nilly, we're going to pick and change, pick and choose what we want to follow, when we want to follow them, and how we want to follow. And I'm just saying that I'm, as a council member, I'm not going to be held to no three minutes, as long as these rules say I can speak uninterrupted on whatever I want to speak on. Okay, because tonight, you know, we're going to discuss some things, and I'm sure it's going to come up again on the floor. And I don't think any council member should be limited to no three minutes for a presentation that may have a lot of information that needs to be just that need to be dispensed to the citizenry. So I'm just saying that, again, the rules are in place, we need to follow these rules. And if we're not, then I think that, you know, you know, I mean, I don't want to hear anybody calling, saying they're going to, you know, you know, you're not following the rules because you feel that way. I don't believe you base your decisions on feelings, you base your decision on the rules at hand, and the rules that are in play, and the rules that are on the books, not on what you think they should be. Because as I said before, a lot of people think they should be doing something, and a lot of people thinking they should be doing something, sitting in jail right now, so. Or out of office. So I just wanted to put that out there, that, again, if the parliamentarian, at the regular meeting, is going to be the parliamentarian at that meeting, she needs to know what our rules are and follow our rules until there's a discrepancy or a case where parliamentary, parliamentary rules would apply, or will come into play. And I think that she definitely needs to know and read our rules, our procedures. So that's, that's it, that's it for me with that, with my topic of discussion.
Thank you, Councilman Herring. Anyone have any comments or concerns, questions? As it pertains to that topic?
Um, yeah. Can you hear me?
Councilwoman Fareed, are you responding to that, or you want, you, you ready for your topic of discussion?
I just couldn't hear everything that Councilman Herring said, it was cutting in and out at times, so I'm not sure if that was just me. But I think the gist of, I think I got the gist of what he's saying, that he doesn't, he wants the parliamentarians to follow our current council rules until they've been changed. Is that, is that accurate?
Yeah, I want her to follow whatever council rules we have in play, and if something comes out that our council rules don't address, then she can, then it falls to the parliamentarian rules, which is what our rules clearly state right now.
Okay.
Okay. Next topic of discussion would be community garden program, Councilwoman Fareed?
Sure. It looks like the mayor has her hand, I don't know if he wants to acknowledge. I can't, I need to share, if you could allow me to leave this here. Council Vice President, did you want to acknowledge the mayor?
I can, I can't hear you, Councilwoman.
I said, did you want to acknowledge the mayor? I see that her hand is up, I can't wait until
You want to wait?
I can wait until she said what she has to say.
Mayor calls?
Thank you, Council Vice President. I actually had my hand up on the Board of Elections piece, I wanted to just put, for clarity, that we really have a Board of Election that has to be filled before the first Monday in February of the year immediately proceeding. So we have elections in 2025, we have until February 2024, in which to actually load the Board of Elections. So I just wanted to make sure that that was clear. And then additionally, if the Board of Elections is not filled prior to, then the provisions exist, yes, for the city council to appoint citizens to comply or complete those, to complement those ten members. But that is, if it's within six months of a regular election. So our traditional elections will be in May of 2025, so within six months. So I just want to clarify that timeframe that was stated earlier. Thank you so much.
Thank you, I am aware of that. And again, it is my opinion that it should be, we should have an election in place. It does say four years, anything can happen, someone could get sick and have to, you know, drop off or something. Anything can happen. So I do know what it says, but it also says a member, ten members, and it says four years. And, but I definitely, I know we definitely have to have them in place within that time span. So thank you for that, for sharing with that. Councilwoman Fareed?
Okay, I'm ready. Can you all hear me?
Yeah, kind of low.
Can you all hear me?
Yeah.
Okay, and you can see my screen?
Yes.
Okay. So this is, this topic is on community gardens. Councilwoman Guillaume and myself have put forward a resolution, which was part of the work session package, to establish and preserve community garden programs here in the city of Glen Arden. And I thought it would be helpful to kind of give some context as to where this is coming from, some of the challenges that we foresee there being, some of the ideas that we have to get this implemented if this is approved. So the purpose of this resolution is to establish and preserve community gardens through adoption of a program for the city of Glen Arden. This resolution, as most resolutions are, is an expression of opinion and would reflect the city's support for community gardens as a valuable resource, and the city's commitment to collaborate with the community, neighboring cities, nonprofit organizations, and other stakeholders to encourage and preserve community gardens on public land. This resolution calls on the city to do a couple of things. Identify public sites that would be ideal for hosting community gardens, establish a community gardening guidelines, create and distribute a community garden membership application, so the terms in which people would be able to participate in the community garden program, establish a plan for delivering gardening education to the community, and that would be for both those who are participating in the public gardens, as well as those who would want to grow their own gardens on their own private property. And also, as part of this resolution, we would encourage citizens to do that. We would also establish a community gardening committee, which would be primarily responsible for overseeing the particular garden that they are members of. And we would look to be launching a community garden site within three months of adopting the resolution. So I'll just pause there and see if there are any questions, or feel free to stop me as we go throughout. Okay. So although Maryland is one of the wealthiest states in the nation, and has the lowest rates of food insecurity in the country, in Prince George's County, we're not reflective of that. In 2022, the Capital Area Food Bank's hunger report has forty-eight percent of Prince Georgians identifying as being food insecure. And food insecurity means that they don't have access to fresh fruit, fruits and vegetables, or items that are considered part of a nutritious meal, nutritious diet. And you may have heard terms like food desert, et cetera, that are being used in Prince George's County. And what we're experiencing is really the highest rate in the DMV, and that includes Washington, DC, obviously. The most staggering statistic is that households with children are twice as likely to be affected by food insecurity. So children are being significantly impacted by that. In addition to food insecurity, twelve and a half percent of Prince Georgians have diabetes, and seventy-one point two percent are obese or overweight. It's really not a matter of having money, that's not the issue for accessing healthy food. It's also the availability of healthy food. So how far you are from a supermarket that allows you to purchase these types of items is what factors into food insecurity as well. And there's really an urgent need to address this issue through nutritional education, and just providing greater access to healthy fruits and vegetables. And I just also wanted to add that, as we look at our communities and the things that we don't want to be there, like tobacco stores and liquor stores, I think it's important for us as a city and even surrounding communities to make sure that there are healthy alternatives available to our citizens. Any questions? Okay. And you can click on this link, and it'll take you to the information from the Capital Area Food Bank. So some of the key benefits of community gardens are food security, economic empowerment, environmental impact, increased access to fresh fruit and vegetables at a lower cost. If you go over to the supermarket and try to buy organic items, they are going to cost you a lot of money. In addition, having community gardens helps reduce our carbon footprint, because you don't need trucks to transport fruits and vegetables, you don't need to fly them in from another country, you can grow them in your own backyard or right in your community. And another thing that is important about community gardens is that they can be used as an engine to fuel a microeconomy within our city. Members can produce the food and then sell that food at a profit. It also improves physical and mental health. It can fight obesity by positively contributing to the physical activity of participants. If any of you are gardeners, you know that it is, it's an exercise to do. Also, increasing access to nutritional foods will just improve our overall physical health. And it also serves as an important environmental and health education tool. Learning how to use our environment, and learning how to create healthy meals for ourselves with fresh fruits and vegetables and other produce is extremely important. And lastly, but this is certainly not an exhaustive list of all the benefits, it will foster community and beautification. So community gardens are known to be gathering places that bring people together across boundaries of age and ethnicity, empowering residents to become more active in their communities. So it's a nice sort of recreational space. It also allows us to use the spaces that we have in the city for beautification purposes and preserve that land and make it nice just for generations to come. Any questions? Okay. So there are, you know, I'm sure, concerns that some of you may have about the community gardens, and so I thought it would be helpful to try to tackle some of those right here. I think one of the major concerns that you see with community gardens is around rodents, or rats more specifically, and their potential to attract those rodents. And, you know, there are a lot of resources available to help combat this. And so this is some of the stuff that I pulled from that research around what rodents need to survive. They need food, water, and shelter. And while what would be grown in the garden is food, it is not the type of food that rodents can be sustained off of. So rodents need protein, fat, and carbohydrates. So we need to make sure that we're preventing any of that being in the, in the garden, so that it's not a place that is hospitable to rats or other rodents. And as well as making sure there's no standing water, and that we're securing compost, garbage, and, you know, closing gaps. And I thought it was important to highlight the fact that cities where they are known to have rat problems also have thriving community gardens in areas like New York, Chicago, and DC. So it is not something that cannot be done, and that will ruin our opportunity to have community gardens. The other concern may be around funding. So according to the regulations from Opera, municipalities can't actually invest in the creation of community gardens using state and local fiscal recovery funds. And there are also numerous grant programs, like in Maryland, there's the Keep Maryland Beautiful Grant Program, which has been used by other communities to form gardens. The garden structure that we are proposing is more of a co-op structure that members would pay a fee, and that fee would be used to help maintain the garden. And so then that brings us to a third point around maintenance, making sure that there are clear guidelines that will be adhered to and monitored by the Department of Public Works and the Community Gardening Committee. What you'll see is, in what we're proposing, the Community Garden Committee is the primary sort of overseer, and that they will be making sure that the members are adhering to the guidelines and providing a report to the city council on a monthly basis. Any questions? And so community gardens are actually pretty common in Prince George's County, and encouraged by the county council. There was actually a task force that was put together to address food insecurity and other issues. And the University of Maryland has also done a lot of work in this area. So there are a lot of resources available to us in the, in the county to help ensure that our gardens would be successful. And I've just kind of listed here some of the other neighborhoods that have gardens. They have a lot of information available online, and we can certainly seek to bring some of them in for discussion if we would like. And then just kind of summarizing what the key actions would be. So it would be identifying the site, potential site. I did go around with Mr. Simpson to look at the city's vacant properties to identify sites that might be good. I included those as a graph. It's not intended to be an exhaustive list, but just kind of a list to get started with. But the Department of Public Works has all of the properties in the city, and so we can certainly look at those. Develop the community guarding guidelines, and again, we've put together a graph of those guidelines that we can look to look to modify and make sure that it kind of meets everything that we're looking to do. We've also drafted an application that could be used for people looking to participate in the community garden. And then, once we identified the site, we would need to secure the perimeter of those sites with fencing. The fencing estimates would be somewhere between six and eight thousand dollars to secure the perimeter for each of the sites. Provided we'll have more than one site. And then the next step after that, after we secure the perimeter would be identifying the plots. So we are proposing eight by eight plots and five by eight plots on raised garden beds so that we don't have to dig up the ground. And having raised garden beds also is is an easier maintenance than having items in the ground. And then hosting a gardening one-on-one education forum. Again, I mentioned there are many resources across the county that can assist us with this. So Prince George's Community College has an agricultural program where they can come out and assist us. There is an awesome farm at Watkins Park called Sisters of the Soil. They have educational resources that they can share with us. And also, University of Maryland has educational programs where they can come out and share that information with us. And then finally, it would be launching our first garden. So that is all I have. I'll just stop and see if there are any questions or concerns.
Yes, Madam President.
Yes, Councilman Herring.
Yeah, I guess my concern is, okay, what lots are you looking at? Are you looking at buildable lots?
When I'm, I don't know what you mean by buildable lot.
A buildable lot is a lot that you can put a building on and make revenue from if you decide to put a store up or you should try to expand a building or something like that. Those are buildable lots, which actually have a much higher dollar value to the citizens in the community. So are you looking at non-buildable lots, which are small lots that can't be built on and can't be used for anything else?
So I can't answer that question because I didn't know what a buildable lot was before you just explained that to me. But I can tell you that we looked at a number of different places we drove all around the state. Some locations that may be ideal are the the Graffy Knoll across from the police station right now. Usually like where the horse, like where we have the horses for Glenn Arden Day. There's also the possibility of the Graffy Knoll across the street from the municipal center, like behind the community center. There is an area in Ward Three right off of Glenn Arden Parkway and Jeff. It's a, it's kind of a long strip. That's another potential place. There's a place in Ward One, there are a couple of places in Ward One. So diagonal from the municipal center, like right, right there on the corner, that could be another area. And then there's another area on Piedmont. That light area is a nice shape, like it's flat. It probably would be really ideal for a community garden. I don't know that you would be able to put a building in that space. So I would probably say that that space on Piedmont and the space on Glenn Arden Parkway and Jeff would not be buildable lots based upon how you described it. Potentially the spot across from the police station would be. And I know that's being looked at as a potential site for a, you know, a police station, another police station in a few years. Potentially the other across the street behind the community center, I guess, could be a buildable lot. But I don't know what the zoning restrictions are.
Well, there's a lot of the lot on Piedmont is actually a buildable lot. There used to be a house on that lot and they tore it down and it's actually owned by some lawyer or something. They actually bought it in a tax sale, so that doesn't belong to the city. But I'm just, I'm just looking at that fact that, you know, you never know with those buildable lots, what's going to come down the pike and where you may have to build on, like we're looking at the police station and on some of those lots that you just mentioned, that one back there in the back. But I guess my thing is also, I've talked to a number of people who actually have done community gardens and it starts out fine. But then people get bored with it and they let it go to weed. And that's a major problem. And once it goes to weed, then our puddle works crews are going to go and clean it up and pour weeds and pour things out of, I mean, pour weeds and everything outside and whatever else is thrown over in there in those, in those lots. And has there been, I mean, how much interest is actually in throughout the community? Has a poll been done throughout the community to see what the interest is in community gardening, gardening? I'm just saying, I mean, like I said, again, I've talked to a number of people, not only here in Prince George's County, but a number of people in Virginia that actually do community gardens. And, you know, their biggest issue is that people started and then they stopped. They may tend to their garden, but they got to also fight the weeds from everybody else who left there as abandoned. Because they get, they get bored with this whole process after a while. So I just wondered what is the interest actually in community garden? Because I personally, I think that that's a lot of money to sit there and put out. You know, and also I was looking at your route, your guidelines, and it says you're going to have a portable toilet in a parking lot. You're looking at that under the Glenon Community Garden Guidelines? Is that, is that what you're suggesting?
So I will say that everything that has been presented is a draft in terms of the guidelines, et cetera. What I did was I looked at what other communities kind of have in their guidelines and tried to anticipate what would be the needs of people there. You know, like if we don't want people to, you know, urinate or, you know, like try to come into the municipal center while they're at the garden or wherever, that having a portable bathroom would, would be helpful. But that's not, it's not a requirement. And I think my objective here, and I know Councilwoman Gillum is not here, but it's really to kind of get that sense. There has not been a citywide poll taken, but there has been a lot of conversation for actually a number of years about having community gardens that I've been a part of. And so I, I would say that there is an interest. Ultimately, we will see what, you know, an interest is and whether or not people even sign up to participate. But I do know that gardening itself as an activity has been on the rise since the pandemic happened because it's been very helpful for people from a mental perspective. But also as the cost of produce has increased, people have been seeking to really grow their own and have access that way as opposed to, you know, paying as much money as you're expected to pay in the supermarket. So I appreciate your concerns and, you know, we'll consider them where we will in the rules and guidelines, et cetera, to make sure that they're in adherence. The other point that I wanted to say is that there are a lot of lots. There's a pretty long list of what is available in the city. So again, I think the idea is to come together and identify what would be the most ideal spots. Because we're using raised garden beds and not looking to disturb the actual earth underneath. I think that if we needed to, for whatever reason, whether it's because, you know, there's, people got bored or we need to use that space to build something, that the ability to take it apart is easier.
I guess I'm looking at the fact that you, not only that, you're talking about fencing, you're providing water and a lot of other infrastructure needs that may be necessary. Are you, you're talking about doing soil samples and soil testing and all of that prior to planning?
Yes. So those are again, resources that are available. There's a soil preservation group available, resource available through the county that helps with that. So even if you were trying to do your own garden in your backyard, you would be able to access those resources to help and make sure that you have the right things. Because again, that it's highly encouraged to have farms and gardens in urban settings now.
Okay, and also you're saying it's strictly organic or organic garden and no, no use of pesticides or fertilizers?
No, no use of toxic pesticides. And no use of toxic fertilizers. So certainly there's fertilizers used in, in organic growing. It's just nothing but toxins in them.
So who's going to monitor that? I mean, I mean, I mean, I could go and if I had a garden, I could spray whatever I want to on it. You would never know. I mean, how will we know?
I mean, we, I, I do not think that we can control for every single thing. I think what we can do is make sure that we have guidelines and that we have agreements and that when we identify the fact that these things have been have been done, we can, we can address them. And part of the addressing them is that you cannot be a member of the community garden anymore and you cannot reapply. So this is where we need the community garden committee to really be actively involved in the monitoring of the gardens for those purposes.
So, okay, so guidelines, but no enforcement. You mean, you never, if you're talking about having twenty community garden spots and you know, no committee is going to be able to monitor what somebody puts on their plant. You can't sit there and say it's not organic or it's organic or if they're putting organic or non-organic items on there on their plot, because a lot of people probably will use some type of pesticide because if you do organic garden, it tends to, your vegetables tend to get eaten up quicker. Yeah, I, things out there, but it still, it still allows for pests to come out there. And I do know that rats do and rodents do. We have more than just rats in Glenon. We have rats, we got foxes, we got deer, we got skunks. We got every other forest animal you can think of, they would probably go over there and eat them, eat any vegetables that's over there that's out there, you know? So it isn't just rats that you gotta worry about. You also gotta worry about the wildlife out here that's going to come to these community gardens and how you're going to keep them out and how you're going to keep them out of the neighborhoods. You know, we are, we already run into issues now with wildlife. Deer was just lying dead up here on, at Glenon Parkway in seven oh four, three days. You know, so, I mean, I just see, I see, I, I, like I say, and as long as I've been in the city and I've never, and we've talked about this a number of times in my, in my little community group we had, and none of them were interested in, you know, really community garden. And I haven't seen a big outpouring of, of, I mean, of, of, of people who actually are interested in community garden, you know, from, you know, my time being here in the city. I mean, a lot of people have yards, they, they want to garden, they'll plant them in their yards. I think with the money we spend on that, we can do some other stuff. And I don't want to overburden Public Works with trying to clean up a bunch of community garden with this going to be, it's going to go to weed and maintain that and that'd be something else they had to maintain. So, I mean, that's just my concern. So, all right, thanks.
No, I appreciate your concerns, Mr. Herring, and I would love to hear if you have any ideas on how we can address some of the issues that are driving the desire to have community gardens, particularly around having better access to nutritious food. I mean, I've been a part of a number of public forums where, you know, citizens are complaining about the lack of access. You know, the fact that we have so many fast food restaurants in the city, the fact that there are so many tobacco shops, there are all of these liquor stores and all of these things that are detrimental to our community. So that is why this idea is being born, to really provide a healthy way of living for people who want, who want that. So I would, I would be happy to work with you on any ideas that you have to really address that particular need. If your, if your concern is around, you know, these community gardens, what other ways can we address them on the beach channel?
Any other discussion?
I had my hand up, but something keeps taking it down twice. Councilwoman Fareed, thank you so much for your presentation. I've always been one for healthy foods and of course, a couple of my neighbors do have gardens in their yard and they have fences around it because we do at night have a walking deer that are looking for whatever, but they can't get in their yards because they have a fence around their garden, so. But my question is, the water resource, where, where, where would you get your water resources from?
Yeah, so that is a good question because I was like, where would we get the pumping from? And so what I found, because I said, how do other communities, you know, address this? They don't just have water fountains sitting there. And actually, what I found, and we can validate this more with, you know, people who are more experts around gardening, is that if the rainfall really takes care of the majority of the water. So that if you have to have a certain amount of water when you're actually planting and then just through the normal rain cycle, that should provide enough hydration for the beds. Also, using mulch in your bed, and I do this in my garden bed, using mulch helps to retain the moisture that is in there. So I think we can address it that way. And we're in times of needing to water because there hasn't been enough rainfall in a particular amount of time because of the size of the garden bed. Bringing the water in, like through watering cans, et cetera, should be sufficient to, to address it. But I do think that that is something that we need more expert guidance on, you know, how to address, because there's no water source.
There are a couple of citizens that I know of in the city that have a, a community garden or garden. I think it's at the Sports and Learning Complex, if I'm not mistaken, but I'll check with them to see, see if I can share their information or have them, you know, come in and since they've been doing it for so many years, if they can come in and do maybe a presentation about how they were able to get that one up and running. I mean, I've gotten, for at least the last five years, I've been able to partake in some of the, the vegetables that they've produced. So, and I know they have enough experience that they, in doing this, that they could give us some guidance. If not, maybe, you know, maybe ask them to start one. But I know maybe we could get some guidance from them, so.
That would be, that would be awesome. There, I mean, there are so many resources. I was very pleased to see that when I started the research on this, there are so many resources available now and so much effort being put towards it, especially to help communities sustain themselves, really, you know? And it's, I think it's empowering for for people to be able, I found it to be empowering for myself to just go in my backyard and be able to pick my vegetables to cook for dinner or to have in my salad and just to know that what I'm growing and what I'm putting in my body is is good, right? Like that I don't have to worry about where it came from or, or anything like that. And I think also the ability to even sell that produce is empowering for those who, who need another source of, of money.
Also, I also remember the city and, and the, and the Public Works' driveway. They used to have a water horse. I'm not sure if they still have that or not. You know, if it came down to, you know, having to put, put water in that water horse and then, you know, bringing it around, driving it. Because I think they, at one time, if I'm not mistaken, they wanted another one where, where they would go places that didn't have, that needed areas that needed water that belonged to the city that needed watering. But I know they had a water horse at one time. I don't know what happened to it. So that's another possibility also.
Okay, thank you. I never heard that term.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else have any discussion from the council? May I pause?
Thank you, Council Vice President. So yes, I'd worked with Daryl Larkin back with the Glenn Arden Community Center back June fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-two. We actually did put a community garden there for preparations for the summer camp because they were the star camp for the region. So the kids had an opportunity to not only grow those resources, but actually participate in a community-wide project, which was community gardening. And also, Justlavania Woods Elementary School teaches their children through hydro gardening. And we have a resident, Sandra Johnson, who has been really advocating us, Jackson, forgive me, has been advocating us for community gardening for over three years. Now, my recommendation would be hydro gardening because then you would have an enclosed facility that could be managed, maintained, and you can even put it under watch to address some of the concerns of Councilman Herring. There are a few places throughout the city where Public Works is cutting the grass regardless. But this would be an opportunity to create community unity. But that was back June fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-two, and it was a good program and the kids enjoyed it as well, and it's part of the Good Eats Program of the State of Maryland. Thank you.
Thank you for that. That's really good information. Thank you for that. That's really good information. I have not
Sorry, go ahead.
No, I had not looked into hydro gardening because I, I thought it might be more infrastructure cost than just doing the open gardening, but we can consider that if, if we think that's a good option.
I, I, I would, I mean, I would, I guess my concern would be why would you want to do hydroponic solution gardening? That, that, those vegetables is absolutely horrible. It has no flavor to them, you know? I mean, if you're going to garden, you need to garden in the dirt. I mean, I've had hydroponic solution, vegetables and fruit, and there's not much to it. I mean, yeah, it's much, much more convenient, but you don't get the same flavor that you would if you planted them in the ground. So I, I think, I mean, I don't know how many people enjoy that type of vegetables, but you can always taste those when you go to the grocery store and you get those hot house tomatoes. You see, they have no flavor to them. So I know I definitely wouldn't want to consider that. That's it. Thanks.
Okay. Councilwoman Fareed, have you thought about doing a survey? And I do like the fact that it's, we had talked about in two thousand nineteen, we was accepted as a sustainable, a sustainable community. And then people came out and we had several meetings and we actually have a a document that I have. I've been looking at it. I will try to see if I can find the electronic copy. If not, I'll just get some copies made for all the council members. The administration and the, and the mayor's office. And I do, I do remember gardening coming up and it seemed like it fell off the grid. But again, it's like, it's about nine pages and it's I think eleven by fourteen. So it's a lot of information on there. But I was wondering, I don't think it included a private garden, whereas when I say private, in your private, in your, in your yard. It was more of a community. So I was just wondering, had you thought about doing a a survey? To see, because I was surprised, surprised to to, you know, it, I don't think, I might be, you know, mistaken, but I think it, I, I don't believe it made our plan, but that doesn't mean that we can't bring something new. Because this was in two thousand nineteen.
Yeah. So, so it's definitely something that will fall in the sustainable community. No, I haven't done a survey. And I, I guess I was thinking that the application would be the survey, right? Like when we put out the application. If there's no demand, then we wouldn't have a garden, right? Like if nobody is applying to, to be a member of it. But we also want to make sure that people are aware of it. So the idea, we would not, we would not like create the garden and then seek members. We would seek members and then, you know, create the garden. And because it was, it could, the different sites also have different capacity, right? Like if we were to do it in that space on Jeff and Glenn Arden, that probably wouldn't be able to hold more than, I don't know, maybe ten to fifteen plots. But if we had a, a lot of interest, we might want to do it, you know, in some of those other bigger areas that we talked about. So I think my point is that it doesn't, it, it doesn't have to be one garden. And it also doesn't have to be a garden that everybody uses. Like even if there's a smaller population of people who are interested, there are smaller plots of land that we have that could accommodate, you know, just that their need.
All right. Yes, Councilwoman Herring.
Because I'm, I'm, I know what you're talking about, the sustainable communities, but I thought they were talking about farmers markets, bringing in farmers markets into, into the community.
Yeah, they did do that. But some of them did, and some of them did ask for had mentioned the community because because someone, I think in particular, I can't remember what citizen it was, but they were asking about the little space over there between the, the townhouses and the seven eleven. And I think that came up that, that, I don't know if that spot belonged to the American Legion or whatever, but they were just trying to, I remember they was trying to find spaces as well. But that was both, it was both of those.
Right. Okay.
And on that topic, just as a preview, we're also working on a piece of legislation for farmers market. And so I thought, we thought that this would be a good precursor to that because if people are growing items there, then it's a farmer's market. So we're just working through, the state has some guidelines around how to establish those markets and, you know, there's other things, you know, permitting, et cetera, like how will the vendor, so it was a little bit more involved. But we did also look at potential sites to host the farmer's market as well. So again, it's all kind of part of a, a, a plan to just make sure that there are nutritious options for, for our citizens. The produce at Wegman. But again, just putting the power back into the hands of the citizens, I think is going to be extremely important. And especially in counteracting some of the other elements that we don't want. I think even if we want to attract certain types of businesses to our area, like people are always saying, we want more healthy food options. We want a salad place. Like I think we need to demonstrate that our demographic really wants that type of thing before these businesses will come in. You know, I'm sure a salad company will say, they have three community gardens, they must be interested in eating vegetables. You know, and be more willing to come into our neighborhood. So that, that's my hope. I, I know that it's all of our hope that we can create a more nutritious environment for us.
Okay, does that, that concludes your presentation?
Yes.
Thank you, Council Vice President. So this resolution, do we want to, does it need, require more information before we bring it to the council? Bring it to, to the
I don't think so because the things that we're talking about more information on are the things that would be developed in the program, right? Like so, as part of the resolution, we will develop guidelines. Like we don't have to have the guidelines developed before we approve the resolution. That, I just wanted, we just wanted to kind of get us started with some drafts. So that we can have it. But I think the elements that are in the resolution are
Okay, so, okay, so you're saying that the guidelines are just a draft for this resolution right now. They're not this is not exactly what the guidelines are going to be.
Right. And again, we just started it. Like I could, we could have just presented the resolution without those drafts, but I just thought it would be helpful to kind of get us started with the information that we, we've already researched. And start, you know, sharing that. But certainly the guidelines can be added to, reduced.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
No problem. Thank you. I appreciate your time and your comments.
Council, this is Rob, and it appears that Vice President Ferguson, oh, here she is calling me. Hold on a moment. Council. Council Vice President Ferguson, for some reasonings, is having a problem logging back in. So I'm going to put her on speakerphone. Councilwoman, you're on speakerphone. Can you hear her?
Hello? Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, so I was asking, I was calling on Councilwoman Jones.
Okay, I've already asked my
Okay. Everyone else is good? Council? Can you hear me, Rob?
Yes, they can hear you.
I'm going to thank everyone for their participation and their attendance at this meeting tonight. And with that, it is eight P M. This meeting is adjourned. Have a good night.
Good night.
Good night. Thank you.
Thank you. Good night.